All right, let's see. Let's see, do you see everybody back, Jordan?
Let's see here, I see Council Penamoroff, Council Byers. It looks like we're still waiting on Council Greider, Pesteza, and Perry Miller.
Mayor, I just need 10 more seconds, I'll be right back.
Yeah, sure, and Council Clark is not joining us this evening, I would assume you already know that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And before we dive in, Colleen, to double check, did you want me to present anything on your behalf for just doing a verbal presentation today?
Just doing a verbal presentation, but I did send you a packet so that the information would be available to the councilors at a later point, if not to say.
Perfect, I'll make sure that gets forwarded on, thanks, Colleen. There, it looks like the gang is all here.
Yep, there they are, okay. Good evening, everybody, let's get this party started. So we'll call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting of March 16th to order, roll call please.
Councilor Clark is absent, Council Penamoroff.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Pesteza.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Perry Miller.
You're.
And Mayor Ayersblood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. The second item on the agenda is meeting accessibility, Hector.
This is a question for the public, if anybody needs this meeting interpreted into Spanish, to please raise their hand. And it's no pregunta para público, si alguien necesita esta reunión interpretada en español, por favor, hace su mano hoy, and I'll watch the attendees for hands raised, Mayor.
Item number three on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda, are there any staff, I mean, excuse me, any additions or corrections from the council? Seeing none, item number four is community announcements, staff, do you have any community announcements?
Just to share that there'll be another fire resource pop-up event, Saturday, March 19th, there'll be a food truck available and resources for folks who are still displaced from the fire.
Thank you, Jordan, council, any members have any community announcements? I just want to mention, since we have such a great audience tonight, that we will be holding a town hall, it looks like April 27th. We'll get that confirmed this evening, the town hall will be for the, it actually will be a talent urban renewal agency town hall for the purpose of having further discussion on one of the agenda items tonight, which is the possible discussion of talent urban renewal agency. Anything else from anybody? All right. Item number five on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items, Hector, do we have any speaker request forms?
Mayor, we have received one speaker request form from Tony Nieto.
Okay.
And I will look in the audience for Tony, and he is here, so I'll allow him to talk.
Hi, I'm, this is Tony Nieto, and I'm the owner of the proposed Belmont subdivision, which is a 49 lot subdivision off of Belmont Road that's been approved, and not included in our proposal was an area that was designated as wetland, and we went to the state and we got that area delineated. And so there's a good piece of ground there, and knowing the direction of the city and the city council, we would offer that parcel of land, and it's probably four to six lots at least, and designated it for affordable housing. And I guess the reason I'm calling in is just to ask that the city council support this subdivision and work with us to get it completed and create tax funds for the city, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nieto, can you state your city for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you state your city for the record, please?
My city?
Yeah, so I usually open with a name and city for the record.
Oh, my name is Tony Nieto, and I own property in talent, but I live in Medford.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. Any other speaker request forms, Hector?
Mayor, I'm checking the email for public testimony now, and I do not see any additional email requests.
Okay, with that, I'll look to the audience if somebody wants to speak before council on a non-agenda item. This is just another way that we give access to the meetings in this Zoom realm, as if there's anybody, and I'm not seeing anybody, so let's go ahead and move on to item number six, which is public presentation, 6.1. So Ready Update on Wildfire Resiliency Grant Portal for Businesses, staff?
I'd like to welcome tonight the executive director of So Ready, Colleen, to share with us the project they've been working on.
Great, thank you so much, Jordan, and thank you, councilors and mayor, for the opportunity to present, it has been a while, so I do have materials that extend beyond just our current work, just as an update, but I will just start by saying in the packet that you don't have in front of you right now, but is an information about a public press release that we'll send out shortly about our wildfire recovery grants. So this is all private money that we've raised from many of our underwriters, and it will be for businesses that were impacted by the fire, whether that is they lost everything, or perhaps they lost their market. So, for example, a restaurant, for example, may not have been burned down, but a lot of their clientele is no longer there, or has moved on. So it'd be available for them, it's going to be grants that are from $500 to $5,000 essentially, and the grant portal will be on our website very soon, and that's expected to open on April 5th. So there will have to be some materials that demonstrate the need that we will review, will be vetted out by a committee associated with the So Ready Foundation. So I want to clarify that, that this is coming through our IRS charitable sister arm, the So Ready Foundation for that purpose. And how can you help, you can just spread the word when that press release comes out and let your businesses know, as much as you are able, that there's a small opportunity for them to get some help. We know it's not going to make them whole, but what we want to convey is that our region appreciates their decision to rebuild or to press on in Southern Oregon, it's really vital to our Southern Oregon economy. And once those grants are kind of out and we know who's receiving them, we're kind of thinking ahead that maybe we might have a an event of such, which would be in Phoenix or Talent, somewhere where it makes sense. And it could be where we bring some of those folks to celebrate the small success and appreciate that they're choosing to rebuild. So watch for more details on that. As you know, Terrell Roper is our disaster liaison, he was hired under an EDA grant last year, about one year ago, he's coming up on his one-year anniversary. In your packet, you're going to see information about all the work that he has done, how many businesses he's reached out to, and what I put in your packet is the report that we sent to the EDA as we're required to report to them on a six-month basis. So the report you have is really going to be through September, as the next one's coming up, and we'll make sure you get a copy of that. We also during this time, since he has been hired, worked with the United Rotary Clubs to get out some additional funding to hurting businesses throughout the burn area to the tune of about, well, it's over $200,000, so that was good to get that out, and that was a new partner for us to work with the United Rotary Clubs of Southern Oregon. Other things that we're doing, you know, Terrell, I know he's watching tonight, he's engaged in many conversations around housing, around other recovery and resiliency efforts, he sits on many, many meetings to see where there is an opportunity for us to help a business, because that is our primary work, is to help businesses succeed. And then also, it was good to meet with the mayor just last week and learn about, more about this HUD funding that is coming down through Business Oregon, or actually not Business Oregon, but the housing, community housing of Oregon, to see how we might be proactive in getting a carve-out that goes specifically to business. I'm in a conversation with Alex Campbell about that, and just learning more at this point, but wanted you to know, Mayor, that I'm following up on that. We're really excited that the mandates have been lifted, we're very excited to connect again. We had for many, many years, actually 17 years, had what was called the Southern Oregon Business Conference, and we had 250 to 300 guests for that, just talking about what's new in the economy. We would have a University of Oregon professor talk about our regional economic indicators and such. Well, we haven't been able to have that, so we really started looking late last year at an opportunity to change it up. And what we've done is we have a series of video events where we have invited different companies, one is in the development community, one is in hospitality community, and another is in manufacturing, and so those events are spread out through the year, there's three of them, and it's a video series followed by small gatherings. So there'll be a gathering, kind of you could call it a watch party, of that video and a panel discussion around the topic, which is how have we been moving forward through change, respective to each one of those industries? So the first one is scheduled for April 26th and April 21st, there'll be one event in Jackson County and another in Josephine County on different dates, so we have a broader audience, 30 to 40 people, it is registration, and that speaker is Rob Mears, who's with Outlier Construction. Later on this year, in August, we'll have a different one, which is around manufacturing, and the speaker will be Dustin Hall, who is at Cummins Inc. in your own community of talent, and then later in October, we'll have someone whose name is his name is escaping right now, but he's Dave Thomason, he's with the Tap Rock, if you've ever been to the Tap Rock Restaurant in Grants Pass, he owns many restaurants, and he's going to be talking about how it's affected the hospitality. So in your packet, when you see that, you're going to see that schedule, there's still some draft information in there, but we want to let you know that we're excited to connect again and, and see how we can all move forward through change. I think that's our, kind of our theme for everything we do this year at So Ready and in the region. We're also excited to have an actual annual meeting again, we will be in Grants Pass, and you're all invited to come over there and take the jet boats with us down the Rogue River, following a small reception at the Tap Rock. So we're limited, we have 168 seats, so you'll see registration for that also in your packet. You may know, or some of you may know, that So Ready is the agency created in 1987 to actually also respond on the region's behalf to relocation leads. So it has been very robust, believe it or not, it seems odd, but we've had a lot of relocation leads, and we actually have four to five that are very strong for our region, in fact, two of them have interests already in property that's in Jackson County, one is a purchase agreement, the other's a letter of intent, these would create two new plants and 100-plus jobs. So in a couple of years, you'll see those go up, if all things go well, and we expect that they will. But we continue to respond to leads that come from many local referrals, brokers, and even Business Oregon. You may also know that we manage the enterprise zone, so So Ready is very busy right now because there's a critical filing date coming up. We do have one enterprise zone applicant in your region, and that is Cummins. So there's, we're very active, we have about 35 of those out in the entire region, and they are just in this point of submitting their property schedules and their claims, so they actually can receive the incentive, which is property tax abatement on the new investment. Doesn't count on the land or anything that was already existing on the tax rules, it's for new investment for traded sector companies, when they also add at least 10% new jobs, so letting you know about that, it's a big number in our region, to date, we've done about 185 applications over time since the early 1990s. In fact, that number is almost $500 million in investment during that time, and 13,000 jobs. So this is an important thing that we do, and I wanted to keep you up to date on that. Also, you may know that we have a loan program, that loan program actually is federal funds that come from the Economic Development Administration and also the US Department of Agriculture, and it was seed funding going all the way back to 1994 that helps us provide gap financing to businesses that may not be able to get the traditional financing through a bank. So we come alongside, we take a second, and so we have plenty of money to lend, we've managed those funds really well over the years, in fact, we have quite a bit of money to lend, because what has happened during these pandemic years, so many businesses getting PPP and idle loans and other things, they've paid off the higher interest rate things, which is a smart move so that a business can stay resilient and ready for the next thing, so we have plenty of cash. We also have an opportunity in front of us to actually pay off two loans to the federal government, so that takes away our liability, and then potentially also allows us to have more creativity with that loan program. So our board of directors is looking at that right now to see how that might be used in really areas that have been hard hit, such as the South Valley. So we're looking into that further to know the rules and such, but right now, and this is another thing for you to be thinking about, maybe you know a business that needs a loan that was impacted by the pandemic. This is a 1% interest rate loan, so it's practically free money. We have to get all those dollars out by the end, or lent, like, approved for lending by June 30th, and we still have about $100,000 left. So if you know a business and they want to just see if maybe they can qualify for that, please send them our way, and that's Kim Young, who's our loan manager. We also, at the beginning of the pandemic, had the opportunity to receive a grant from the federal government, the EDA, for the CARES Act funding that went directly to So Ready, it was $400,000. What I want to share with you is that we then passed out 78% of that to small cities, and I know that you used yours as part of the marketing study in partnership with Phoenix. We sent it out to travel Southern Oregon for tourism projects and things like that, so we didn't keep that money except to make sure we had plenty of capacity, we passed it all out. So we just, we just want to share that, because we think that's a great success for our region. You all, a few years ago, helped us fund our One Rogue Valley Strategy, that is our comprehensive economic development strategy from 2020 to 2025, it's, it's updated every five years, it's required by the EDA, as we are the region's economic development district, so now that the pandemic and the mandates seem to be much better for us, that, and that they're lifted, we are evaluating our highest priorities again, so that we can move forward on the tactics outlined in that strategy. When you get your packet, there's a link, or you can go directly to our website and look at that. Southern Oregon Edge Profiles is my last item, and then I'll be finished and ask any questions you might have. We do many, many business profiles, we've been doing this for maybe almost 10 years, there's about 55 of them on our website. And why do we do those, is to share with the world incoming companies, and then also use them in our career fairs and among existing companies, the great companies that we have in our region, many of which people don't know about. So we're trying to connect the great careers and the great companies we have in our region. So the last two that were published was Greens Co-op in Medford, and then one in Grants Pass, which is Weekend Beer Company, it's a new brewery. So wanted to let you know about that, but I also want to encourage you to watch for press releases or other information via our newsletter, because Cummins is the next profile that would be published sometime in April, and you might want, be interested in that story. The very last thing that's in your packet is just a PDF of our economic impact brochure that tells you what we accomplished from July 1, 2020, through July, excuse me, June 30th, 2021, which included over $7 million that we got out to hurting businesses, we passed through that funding from your jurisdictions, CDBG grants and things like that to businesses, so we have appreciated being able to serve you, we thank you for your support, and I will ask whether you have any questions for me tonight. Thank you.
Council Byers?
Thanks for all those great updates.
You're welcome.
I'm excited to hear all of that, and I'm curious, as I share information about a number of the things you brought up, one, if for the small business grants, if those applications are in Spanish also?
Yes.
Great.
In fact, we, well, I'm the one person on staff that actually speaks, reads, and writes Spanish, but I would, and so we did our best, and we have great technology like Google Translator and things like that to do our best, but yes, it is in Spanish as well, and it will be on our website very shortly.
Wonderful, and then I'm wondering if there's any sort of like supporter assistance for business owners that find that grant process a little daunting, I know it can be.
Sure, you know, we're going to do our best, so if they've been impacted, we encourage them to call us, call us directly or request an appointment, there'll be a place to do that on the portal, or also just refer them to Terrell Roper, our disaster liaison, and he will make sure that the best person on staff to help that person is available.
Wonderful, and then I'm also wondering if the application process, again, for that incredible loan opportunity is also available in Spanish.
You know, I'd have to check with Kim whether that's in Spanish or not, that's really not so much of an application as call-in, tell us what you have in mind. But we would look, if, if we did have a Spanish or Latino client, we would be sure that we arrange to have some translation, you know, for their need, so.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, counselor.
Well, I had a question, but Council Byers just asked it about the 1% loan. Are there any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Colleen, it's good to see you again.
You're welcome, good to see you, maybe next time I'll get to see you in person.
Yeah. All right, thanks again. So the next item on the agenda is item 7.1, which is the appointment of the Budget Committee members. And so council, in this case, this is the one-off of the budget process, in that there isn't a standing committee to send the members to, to interview, and usually, as you know, I prefer to ask for, ask for appointments with the recommendation of the respective committee or commission, but it isn't the way it works for the Budget Committee. So I've had an opportunity to meet with both of these candidates and have a little bit more in-depth conversation with them both. One of them, I actually was able to recruit into this effort, and I was really pleased with both of the, both of the great interviews. And, and also, you know, just want to note that both of them come to us with really, really good service experience. So it is really my pleasure to ask for consent for the mayoral appointment of Jerry Lee and Zach Zendron as a member of the City of Talent Budget Committee for the three-year term, beginning on March 16th, 2022. Council Byers?
I moved to a point. Actually, a quick point of order question, can I say both names in this one motion, or do I need to do something?
You can do, you can do it either way, whatever you, whatever, however the spirit moves you.
Okay, thank you. I moved to appoint Jerry Lee and Zach Segstrun to the City of Talent Budget Committee for a three-year term, beginning March 16th, 2022.
Again. We have a motion and a second to approve the mayoral appointment of Jerry Lee and Zach Segdrin as a member of the City of Talent Budget Committee for a three-year term, beginning March 16th, 2022, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, up, Jordan, did you have a question?
I just wanted to share that Jerry is with us tonight in the audience, so thank you, Jerry, for being here.
Oh, great. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Council Penamoroff.
Yes.
Councilor Greider.
Yes.
Councilor Pesteza.
Yes.
Councilor Byers.
Yes.
And Councilor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Item 9.1 on the, or item eight is department reports, excuse me, staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, you all have contained in the agenda packet our summary of what's going on in the city, as well as some updates on our grants and major projects, I'm more than happy to open up to any questions that council may have at this time.
Anybody? I always say that's a, that's a good indication of a good report, when there's very few questions, and I might just want to commend again. I love the, the report that we get about the permits pulled, and, and we keep, do we keep that information updated on the website? I think I always ask that, but it's a question I get asked a lot, so, yeah.
Yep, I will say, Kristen can override me, but yes, we do, and very exciting, we expect to have our new website launched towards the mid-to-end of April, where it'll be even more accessible and easy to see what those permanent numbers are.
It'll be a banner day.
Fingers, fingers crossed for that deadline.
Right. Going once, going twice, no questions, okay, moving on to item 9.1, which is Community Development Block Grant for Emergency Food Access. So staff?
Yeah, so the process tonight for this public hearing is the mayor will go ahead and read the public notice out loud, and then we will have someone from staff read it out loud in Spanish as well. I'll go ahead and present a summary of the project being proposed, and we'll open a hearing for public comment and close the hearing. These are just the very strict guidelines that we need to do for applying to the Community Development Block Grant. Mayor, do you happen to have that document in front of you, or do you want me to share a screen to be able to read off of?
No, I, I have it queued up.
Perfect, and it is worthy, so thank you in advance.
Sure, okay, so with that, this is the public notice and notice of a public this is the public notice and notice of a public hearing. The City of Talent is eligible to apply for a 2022 Community Development Block Grant from the business, from Business Oregon. Community Development Block Grant Funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public facilities and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate incomes. The state expects to receive approximately $13 million in new federal funds during 2022 for grants to non-entitlement cities and counties for eligible projects. The maximum grant that a city or county can receive under the COVID-19 Impact Assistance Program for food bank assistance activities is $250,000. The City of Talent is preparing an application for a 2022 Community Development Block Grant from the Business Oregon. It is estimated that the proposed project will benefit at least 9,900 people per month, of which 100% will be low or moderate income. A public hearing will be held by the City of Talent Council, by the, by the City of Talent City Council on March 16th at 6:45 via Zoom. A link to the meeting can be found at www.cityoftalent.org. The purpose of this hearing is for the City Council to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons, as well as other needs in the community that might be assisted with a Community Development Block Grant project and the proposed project. Written comments are also welcome and must be received by 5:00 PM on March 16th at 110 East Main Street Talent or by email to publictestimony@cityoftalent.org. Both oral and written comments will be considered by the City Council in deciding whether to apply. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with a disability. Please contact Hector Flores at 541-535-1566, extension 1012, if you will need any special accommodation to attend and participate in the meeting. More information about Oregon Community Development Block Grants, the proposed project, and records about the City of Talent's past use of Community Development Block Grant Funds is available for public review at 110 East Main Street Talent, Oregon 97540 during regular office hours. Advanced notices requested. If special accommodations are needed, please contact Hector Flores at 541-535-1566, extension 1012, so that appropriate assistance can be provided. Permanent involuntary displacement of persons or businesses is not anticipated as a result of the project, of the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. Any low and moderate income housing that is demolished or converted to another use will be replaced. Okay, I'll hand this off to presumably Hector.
Thank you, Mayor. Aviso público y noticias de audiencia pública. La ciudad de Talen es elegible para aplicar y su subsidio en 2022 de Community Development Block Grant, que a su vez viene de Business Oregon. Los subsidios de Community Development Block Grant bloqueo subsidiario para desarrollo comunitario viene desde U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Departamento de Vivienda y Desarrollo Urbano de los Estados Unidos. Los subsidios pueden ser usados para inhalaciones públicas y remodelaciones de casa, primariamente por personas con ingresos moderados o bajos. Aproximadamente 13 millones serán otorgados en 2022 a ciudades y condados metropolitanos de Oregon. El máximo de subsidios que la ciudad o el condado puede recibir es 2.500.000. La ciudad de Talen está preparado una publicación en 2022 para el subsidio del Community Development Block Grant, que viene de Business Oregon, para la asistencia del Banco de Alimentos para Residentes que ingresos bajos a moderados que viven en City of Talent. El condado de Jackson está estimado que el proyecto puede beneficiar o por lo menos 9.900 personas por mes, de los cuales 100% serán del ingreso moderado o bajos. Una audiencia pública se llevará a cabo por el Consejo de la Ciudad a las 6:45, 16 de marzo por Zoom. Se puede encontrar el enlace a la reunión en www.cityoftalent.org. El propósito de esta audiencia es para que el Consejo de la Ciudad obtenga puntos de vista de los ciudadanos y para responder preguntas acerca de desarrollos comunitarios y necesidades de vivienda. Específicamente las necesidades de personas con ingreso moderado y bajos, así como también otras necesidades en la comunidad que podrían ser asistidas con subsidio el proyecto Community Development Block Grant. El proyecto propuesto. Los comentarios escritos son también bienvenidos y deberán ser escritos a más tardar el 16 de marzo a las 17:00 en la 110 Email Street Talent, Oregon 97540, o por correo electrónico al public testimony@cityoftalent.org. Ambos comentarios escritos y orales serán considerados el Consejo de la Ciudad en asistir si aplica. La ubicación de la audiencia es accesible para personas con incapacidades. Por favor, deja contactar Hector Flores a 541-535-1566, extension 1012, para saber si usted necesita cualquier tipo de acomodaciones especiales para asistir o participar en la reunión. Más información sobre Oregon Community Development Block Grants, el proyecto propuesto y las pasadores registrados sobre la ciudad en el uso de los subsidios de Community Development Block Grant. Están disponibles para la revisión pública en la 110 Email Street Talent, Oregon 97540, durante las horas regulares de oficina. Se requiere aviso anticipado. Si las acomunizaciones especiales son necesitadas, por favor, notifique Hector Flores al 541-535-1566, extension 1012, de modo que la asistencia aprobada puede prevenirse. La desalojamiento involuntaria permanecerá de personas o negocios no es esperada como un resultado del proyecto propuesto. Si la desalojamiento llegará a ser necesaria, serán examinadas alternativas para minimizar la desalojamiento y proveer beneficios requeridos razonables para que ellos renoven vidos.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And that did not sound like Hector. I'm guessing that's Lucero. Yeah. Thank you, Lucero, for making our meetings more accessible. We appreciate your help. Okay, so with that, I'm opening the public hearing at this point, Jordan.
No, let me go ahead and give a quick summary of what this project is about. And then we'll go ahead and open the hearing for comment, close the hearing for comment. And then, you know, I'm correcting mistake. We will want to passion, pass a motion tonight to approve the application.
Okay. All right. So take it away.
All right. Thank you. Now, as we all know, COVID-19 has really impacted our community, particularly around food access. At the same time, the fire hit, which just made food access even harder for so many of our community members. So as such, the City of Talent has partnered with Access along with the really excellent guidance by Rachel Maticus, a consultant for applying to CDBG, to apply for $250,000 in CDBG grant funding specific for food access to help the food pantries here in Jackson County have the equipment necessary to help better, better receive, store, as well as deliver food to our community members. So that is the, what tonight's public hearing is about, as well as anything else that the public would like to comment on in terms of housing needs, food access and any other community development topic. So with that, Mayor, I will hand it back to you to open the hearing.
Okay, so we, at this time, we will open up a public hearing for comments. Are there any written comments, Hector?
Here, I have not received any written comments for this public hearing.
Are there any speaker request forms?
Additional, there are no speaker request forms for this public hearing.
I will look to the audience to see if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this item. And if you are on your phone, you can always just, I see there's a couple phones, you can just star six and announce your intent. All right. Well, okay. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. And are there any questions or comments before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
And I will clarify for council as well, the motion will be to approve the application.
Any takers? There we go. Counselors.
I move to approve the Community Block Grant application.
Again, we have a motion and a second to approve the Community Development Block Grant application. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Pranamoff.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Hector. And, and Jordan, please thank the staff for staying in front of these really important opportunities for our community. Food is a basic need and we really appreciate all of your efforts. Item number 10 is the Consent Calendar. Has everybody had a chance to read all of the, all of the minutes? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller.
Thank you. I move to approve the Consent Calendar. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Pranamoff.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is 11.1 Citywide Goals. Staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I'm excited to see the higher than turnout, higher than usual turnout tonight. I know it's really for this topic item and no other topic on the agenda, I'm sure. So each year, the, the city goes through a goal-setting process to help set kind of the priorities and the objectives for the next year. And these goals and objectives really play into the budgeting that we do, as well as the check-ins that we do throughout the year to make sure we're having the outcomes we intend. City Council embarked on this process back in November. They kicked it off. And we've been working ever since to come up with some summarized city goals for council to consider and eventually adopt. So tonight, I just want to share a little overview of the process that we use, the major themes that came out of it, and as well as how to navigate our draft goals currently. You know, my ask of City Council will be to take some time to sit with these, to, to make notes on them and share any thoughts my way. They will come back before you on March 30th at our special meeting that we'll have with the committee chairs for approval then. So with that, I'll just dive in to some of the overview. So we began this year's goal-setting session with all of you back in November in our in-person brainstorming session. And you all really set the stage by naming the six core areas that we really wanted to focus on, really over the next five years. And those six are in the circles over on the right. You know, after you all set the, the major themes, we as staff went out to our committees and we asked for their feedback and for their brainstorms on what, what is a, you know, vibrant, diverse talent look like to them? What happens? What does it look like to them when we achieve our goals and where do they see the priorities being for the community? You know, we as staff also collated several different community priorities by looking at survey responses that have been done throughout the past year. And then, of course, we looked at our comp plan to really identify specific actions and how they link to moving us forward in our current priorities, as well as those long-term ones that have been identified. I want to just throw up here, we had, I had a lot of fun going to our commissions and committees. And this is just part of our brainstorm event. I just threw up here where folks just described what they saw in their minds when we had met all of our goals as a city. This is more just to show you how much amazing brainstorm happened and how much positivity and excitement happened with all those thoughts. And what was really great is that there were some very, very strong themes across all of the commissions and committees, as well as city council's thoughts as well. Those major themes are up here on the board. You know, the one that's bigger than all the rest and with the stars, community gatherings. Because that is what we've heard over and over, not only in all these committee and commission meetings, but also in the surveys, also into phone calls that we're receiving from community members and staff. Folks are really looking forward to getting back together again in talent, particularly in our outside spaces with music and with food. Something that really was loudly prioritized. The other really common themes is biking and walking. Folks want to get out and they want to move about in nature. Essential businesses. These are things like hardware stores. Ice cream shop was mentioned a lot of times, a place to dance, a music venue. Emergency response, still a lot of awareness about where we can improve for how we can communicate with folks, help them prepare and help our community be prepared if an emergency were to come again. And then another really strong major theme was families. And all of these brainstorm sessions when people were visualizing talent, they visualize children in parks, kids biking to school, families going to markets together, you know, really staying as a family-focused town came through loud and clear as well. So I'm going to take you, you know, those were the big picture takeaways I just wanted to share tonight. In the agenda packet, you'll see the actual specific goals that fall in within those subject areas that, that council identified. And I just want to point out how to kind of navigate these charts. Right? So within those goal areas, for example, affordable housing, we have a goal. And my goal is more housing stock for affordable and workforce households. We have objectives. There are things that need to happen in order to achieve that goal. And then we have a set of steps that we need to take to help make that objective happen. Equity focus are things that we have flagged that we think we can have a really strong, stronger equity impact. And a reminder means equity means recognizing that different community groups have different community needs and to make sure to highlight all of them so that folks can all have the same outcomes, rather than there being really great inequality in our town. I think we can work on that definition. You know, timing is our best guess of how, you know, what timeframe we can get it done in. I'm currently working with staff to refine that timing. And then, of course, the team, and these are the main players that will be involved in getting those steps done. And then throughout the year, we'll be analyzing is have these steps led to helping make that objective happen? And has that objective helped make the goal happen? You know, as mentioned, our March 30th will be when I ask council if they're willing to adopt these goals. They are still in draft form, so please take the time to review them, you know, jot down some notes and share those notes with me. And I'll incorporate them into the document. Same thing staff is going to go through right now as well. Read through those goals, make their comments, particularly around capacity, timing and other missing elements to help make goals happen. Share the type of feedback they've already received. Thank you to those folks who were on it, even though I just sent them out this morning. Big kudos to you all. You know, examples of the type of feedback that I'm receiving. It's really helpful for me to make this document something that can really hold true to our values and what we want to see happen over the next chunk of years. And last but not least, I want to just give a huge thanks to everyone that played a part in this goal setting. It really helped me just better know the It really helped me just better know the community, better know the players, um and have some good fun doing it, so. Um, I'm open, I'm happy to open up to any questions at this time if people have immediate feedback. Um, but I also know we have a hot topic agenda item tonight to get to. Oh, Mayor, I think you're on mute.
I'm glad I, you caught me early because I didn't even have a chance to say something brilliant. Um, but I'm, I I I just wanna say um again that um. I am so grateful for the, for the approach you took on this, you know, for years, we've wanted this kind of. Community engagement through the committees and commissions, and that the effort you made. Um, really shown in our community, I had so much feedback from committee and commission members about your tour day. Uh, committee and commissions and um really uh engaging with everybody um to hear their feedback. So that we could integrate the community's voice into these goals. Uh, in a way that I don't, I I honestly, in all my years, can't say that I've seen any other city manager do, you just hit it out of the park. Uh, we paid an awful lot of money, as I've said before, for consultants to do work that I don't think is any better than this. And so I'm very, very grateful, and I look forward to continuing to hone these. Uh, over the course of the next couple of weeks so that we can get to this on March thirtieth and. And uh see these goals put into action when you get into your budget cycle. I I I just wanna thank you so, so much for your great approach on this, you were really great. Any other comments? Alright, um. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. I'm stuck, I'm looking at the. Right and shiny pictures, so I've gotta go back to the agenda here. Sorry about that. Do you have anything else to add before I move on to new business? Alright. So with that, we'll move on to new business. Item number twelve point one is presentation on financial analysis of the proposed new urban renewal district. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this line item is here as a, as a quest from our talent urban renewal agency. To present the financial analysis performed on the proposed urban renewal district. And so that, I would love to invite John McGarza, the executive director of our current talent urban renewal agency, as well as Elaine Howard. Um, who has been helping through with this project.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Mayor. Um, Hector, were you able to promote Elaine as a panelist here?
Uh, yes, Mr. McGarza, Elaine, Elaine has been promoted as a panelist.
I'm here.
Thank you, thank you, um greatly appreciated. I know there's a lot of people now and it's uh wanting to listen in tonight. Um, wanna thank the mayor and council, the city of Talent, uh adopted the original Talent Urban Rail Plan for the agency. In nineteen ninety-one, the agency has achieved great success in exceeding its original plans and goals. And increasing the tax valuation of both anticipated original amount as prepared in nineteen ninety-one. Today, the talent urban renewal area has ceased taking any division of taxes from the assessor but continues to carry out its mission on behalf of the talent community. The urban renewal agency of the city town has made many investments into infrastructure and improvements throughout the plan area. Including paved streets, building roads, sidewalks, realizing infrastructure on the gateway project to encourage long-term development on the site. The adoption of a new plan area would allow talent to help reduce blight due to the Alameda fire. As of today, the city of Towns still has many single-family, manufactured, multifamily. And commercial properties that have yet to apply for permits. And continues to have a long pathway ahead to realize rebuilding its blighted areas within the community. This proposed work plan that overlaps much of the burn scar area will help foster, help foster and bolster development and reduce blight. Resulting in long-term tax benefits for the talent community and its taxing partners. Rebuilding all the units lost due to talent, to the Alameda fire will take time and strategic investment. Which the new work plan would foster within the talent community. Tonight, we have our experienced urban renewal consultant Elaine Howard. To present more information on the proposed new urban renewal work plan. That could help pave the way to Talents Community long-term recovery. By strategically investing and improving blighted areas within talent. And with that, I'd like to let Elaine take it from here, and just Elaine, I'll drive and just let me know when you wanna go.
Great, thank you. I'm Elaine Howard, I'm working on this project with Nick Poppenuck from Tiberius Solutions. Next slide. This is the roadmap of what we'll go over tonight, so just a little introduction of who I am and why I. Am qualified to work on this project, some urban renewal background, the financial capacity of the proposed urban renewal area. Uh, potential impacts on taxing districts, survey information from the survey that we've had online. And then an overview of the public process and next steps. So this just shows a cutout of the map of urban renewal areas in Southern Oregon. I thought it might be helpful for you to see that. And then also to know that I have worked with every single one of these urban renewal areas. Um, I was born and raised in Grants Pass, went through my whole education there, I understand. Southern Oregon and Southern Oregon values and hold that part of the state very dear to me. So I enjoy working in Southern Oregon and have had great success on the projects working there. Next slide. So why are? People considering urban renewal for talent? Urban renewal provides funding to implement city plans and visions and the goals that your city manager was just talking about. To address the barriers to development in the following ways. First, the impacts of the fire has devastated much of downtown talent. A financial tool is needed to help rebuild the city. And urban renewal can be part of that toolbox for rebuilding. Given the amount of devastation that happened, you are going to need every tool in the toolbox. That you can access to be able to help your community. Next slide. Urban renewal is not a new tax, it does not crease, increase any property tax bills. It will be a line item on everybody's property tax bill if urban renewal areas are adopted. Um, so in the past, you've had urban renewal on your property tax bill for the prior urban renewal area. That should have gone off this year. Um, as you are no longer taking any money from any other taxing districts. Or doing what's called the division of taxes that John talked about. Um, although urban renewal is not a new tax, it is not new money and impacts do come from somewhere. And we will talk about that as we go through the presentation. Next slide. As all of us pay our property taxes in November, the assessor collects those taxes. And distributes them to all of the different taxing jurisdictions. Those taxing jurisdictions are the city, the county, the fire district, the school district. Um, next slide. Our property taxes in Oregon go up for two different reasons, they go up because of the allowed three percent appreciation on our properties. Every year assessed value, a lot of times your real market value will go up higher than that three percent limitation. But your assessed value is prohibited from increasing more than three percent unless. You do substantial improvements on your property, or you do um new construction. On any portion of your property. Next slide. When a city forms an urban renewal area, the taxes off of the increased growth within that area only. Go to your urban renewal agency to complete projects and programs within that urban renewal area. Again, that increase in tax revenue from that area. Goes to the agency, but all other tax revenue from all properties outside that boundary area. Continue going to all the taxing districts as before. And the value of the property at the time that it's put into the urban renewal area. The taxes off that value will also continue going to all the different taxing districts. Next slide. This shows the concept in a little different format, it shows across the bottom that there is what's called a frozen base. That term is sometimes misunderstood because people think that maybe that means people don't end up paying property taxes. Everyone pays their property taxes as if they always have. And the frozen base just means the value of the property at the time an urban renewal area is established. That's the value upon which the assessor provides the taxes to all the different taxing jurisdictions. The increment shown in blue is that increased taxes off of the increased assessed value over time. You can see that that increment starts out slowly, and that's because it's based purely on the three percent growth. Until some new development starts occurring. Once that new development starts occurring, you can see that there are some increases within that blue area. A lot of times, projects are completed in an urban renewal area before the debt is completely paid off. Um, once that debt is paid off. And the urban renewal area expires, all the taxing districts will receive the full amount of taxes from the full assessed value. Of that area, along with their taxes from all of the other properties outside of the urban renewal area. Next slide. This just gives the concept of how powerful urban renewal is in terms of leveraging the city's tax rate. So what this pie shows is that full permanent rate taxes for the city of talent. And it shows that twenty-four percent of that full tax rate um is paid to the city of talent itself. Thirty-two percent go to the schools, and we'll talk about that school funding in the next couple of slides. Um, about twenty-three percent goes to the rural fire department and then Jackson County, about fifteen percent. And the other taxing districts are those smaller portions of the pie. By being able to establish an urban renewal area within your community. Instead of just getting twenty-four percent of that tax rate to be able to address needs within your area. You're getting that full one hundred percent, so you are leveraging that other seventy-six percent of the permanent rate taxes. Next slide. Schools are financed differently in Oregon, they're financed through what's called the state school fund, the state school fund. That's a, that's okay, um. To me off here, so uh. Go ahead, Joan, that was alright, sorry, um regular. Taxing, record taxes are received directly from the assessor's office for the other taxing districts. Outside of the school, so this shows that that is a local im. It's a direct impact on the local property tax revenues. Next slide. You can see the schools are vastly different, schools are funded through that state school fund on a per pupil basis. That state school fund is comprised of the state general fund, lottery funds and other sources. The state general fund is the biggest component of the state school fund at a little under sixty-three percent. That is made up of income taxes, the property taxes are a component of what goes into the full state school fund. Um, but because any. City has an urban renewal area does not mean they get any less money on a per pupil basis. For any of their schools within the area. What the legislature does is allocate. That per pupil amount, and then they backfill that state school fund with all of the other funding sources. To be able to reach that funding amount that they establish statewide. Next slide. This is the proposed boundary that we've been reviewing in the last few sessions with the city council. And the talent urban renewal agency. Um, you can see on the boundary map that. Uh, it mostly goes down through the main corridor along South Pacific Highway. It is, uh, it, it takes in much of the Alameda fire perimeter. And then it um has some little spider uh webs or octopus legs or whatever you wanna call them. That go out and reach a couple of other um portions of the community. If we get to the end of the presentation and we want to look at this boundary anymore, we can pull it back up, up. Next slide. We have been working for the last um couple of months on. The capacity of the urban renewal area. You can only figure out that capacity really once you've established your boundary. Because the capacity is based upon the ability of those tax lots within your boundary to produce. Uh, property tax revenue, so once we had the boundary complete, we were able to give that to Tiberia Solutions. To evaluate the financial capacity within the area. There are a couple of terms on this that I'll go through and help walk through what this really means, so. Total net TIF, TIF stands for tax increment funds or tax increment financing. That is the amount of money that comes to an urban renewal agency due to those increased tax revenues. Within the urban renewal area. This is uh looked at, so that total TIF number is a little over sixty-seven million dollars. That is for a thirty-year term urban renewal area. That is about the average of uh the duration of urban renewal, new urban renewal areas in the state of Oregon. The maximum indebtedness is another specific defined term. Maximum indebtedness is a limitation in any urban renewal plan. And it means you may not spend any more than that amount of money over the timeframe of your urban renewal area. So if you take the total net TIF and you subtract out any potential interest paid on debt. Over the lifetime of an urban renewal area, you get this number for maximum indebtedness. Which is a little under fifty-seven million dollars. That is over a thirty-year time period, and if you look at that in capacity of today's dollars, twenty-twenty-two dollars. That would buy you thirty-two million six hundred dollars worth of projects. The reason why that's important for us to do is as part of developing an urban renewal plan. You have to identify how much money you're going to spend on projects and how much you're going to allocate to which types of projects. So when we get to looking at that kind of analysis. We know that the total for the projects, programs and administration over that thirty years. Cannot exceed that thirty-two million six hundred thousand dollars. When we look at how that money comes in over time. As I said earlier, when we were looking at the chart, the early part of an urban renewal area always has slow growth. And that's because it is that three percent increase on the existing assessed value. So in years one through five, the projections are for just a little more than two million dollars. Year six through ten, that increases to five million three hundred thousand. And then over the next five years in increments for, for incremental periods, it's around six million dollars. That levels out as we are, when we look at the financial analysis. Uh, Tiberia Solutions projects when you might be able to do bond sales. And to be able to give you kind of an equal amount of money in five-year increments. So none of that is set in stone, you can end up doing bond sales at a little different time, you can decide not to do bond sales at all. But this is one analysis of how urban renewal areas typically are conducted. So that it gives you a sense of what the capacity for that urban renewal area would be. Next slide. The next slides, uh there are a number of them, all go through the different impacted taxing jurisdictions. And compares what the amount of. Foregone revenues from the urban renewal area would be as a percentage of the overall. Overall permanent rate levy funds for that taxing jurisdiction. So although we know every dollar is important to every taxing district. We also know that by concentrating money within an urban renewal area, you are able to make things happen and make growth happen. That would not have happened without urban renewal. Doing projects within that area. So when we talk about foregone revenue, first and foremost, we need to understand. That that is both a combination of that three percent growth. But also our anticipation that by doing projects within that area, you are going to help talent come back. And grow and have new businesses. Help your existing businesses and put in new housing and new community facilities for your community. So when you look at this analysis. So when you look at this analysis for Jackson County. Because Jackson County is a much larger district than the city of talent is. The impact of that portion of your area that would be in urban renewal as compared to the overall Jackson County budget. Is under one percent. When you average that over a thirty year time period, it's at point four percent when averaged over that thirty year time period. The amount that would be foregone is a little under ten million dollars, nine point seven million dollars. But when you look at the amount of money. Um, that the county would end up. Uh, receiving, it's about two point. Six plus. Billion dollars. So that nine point seven million dollars is only less than one percent. Of the total amount of revenue. So sometimes when we look at the impacts to the district through the urban renewal area, which is that. Fourth column that says for U R A. We look at those and um, they, they look scary or they look very, very big. And that's because we're looking at them in isolation. If we look at them. Both in the context of. What the county would receive. With just the regular growth that has been happening. They don't look nearly as um, as scary or as large. And you can see that the percentages are very low. I see there's a question?
Yeah, um, hi Elaine, um, I'm just looking at this chart. I want to um, just make sure you can validate. That I'm, that I'm reading it correctly. Uh, one of the things I noticed is that um, in the beginning, the percentage. Uh, the, the, and the, and the amount of money foregone is, is almost trivial. And that it increases very, very gradually. So it seems like for the other district, there is time. For them to adjust. It's not a slap. It's, it's a very, very slow adjustment. Um, over time with a very gradual increase. Um, so that's one observation. Um, the second observation is that uh, making the assumption. That um, the rest of the area is going to grow at three point six percent. We know it's gonna be at least three percent. Cause we get that um, every year, but uh, and then the point six is assuming that there is some. Some growth in, in new construction or, or whatever improvements. Um, but it, it seems rather. That that seems pretty conservative. Um, an estimate that it could be growing uh, outside the urban renewal, it could grow at a faster rate than that.
And, and it could grow and we tried to be conservative and that rate was. Um, was actually. Uh, using like the five, past five years historical rates. So what, what, we, we tried to be. Very transparent and conservative about that. Um, so yes, it could grow faster. Um, but that's the rate it has been growing. So that's what we used. And yes, part of those increases. Are the increases in percentages are because we're anticipating new growth. Within the urban renewal area that may not, and for much of it would not occur unless. The urban renewal area is able to pride the incentives to make that growth happen. So. Um, I, I. I'm always a little uncomfortable with these because it makes it feel like we're saying, well, that money doesn't mean anything to them. It does mean something. It is real. It's, it just as real to your own city budget. And what we understand from urban renewal and all of the different areas that I've worked in around the state. And I've worked on over one hundred different urban renewal projects is that urban renewal does work. Urban renewal does help growth happen. In areas, especially in your area where you have so many needs now. Urban renewal will be or could be a real tool that will help your city regain what it lost. But that is not to discount what the other taxing districts are putting into the pot to help you. And that's really what you have to think about it as is that they are foregoing some of their money to help. Rebuild your community.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Thanks Elaine.
Next slide. This shows the uh, four H extension service. So the total amount of money. And then again, these are all projections. So they're, they're not promises. We can't guarantee any of this, but these are projections based upon our past. Knowledge of how urban renewal works. Um, so the money foregone to the four H extension service district is a little over two hundred thousand dollars over the timeframe. And again, that percentage is less than one percent. And that is also because the four H district is a countywide district. And they have a much larger service area. Next slide. This is the soil and water conservation district. Again, a larger district. The total impact around two hundred and forty three thousand dollars, again, less than half a percent. Um, over the lifetime of the urban renewal area. Next slide. The library district um, is a little larger. Uh, impact. So the amount is two point five million, but again, you can see that uh, as a percentage of. The amount of money that they would receive, it's still under, as an average, it's under half of a percent. Next slide. Uh, this is the transit district. And the impacts are eight hundred and sixty two thousand, six twenty six. And again, the average impact is uh, less than. Uh, is it about half of a percent? Next slide. Vector control, a similar statistic. Um, two hundred and eight thousand, eight forty one over the lifetime. And uh, point four percent, point four. So still under half of a percent. Next slide. This other Oregon education service district. And again, this is part of that state school fund. So although we do this computation to show really how much money wouldn't be going to the state school fund. The education service district is funded on a per pupil basis. And would not receive any less funding directly as an impact from urban renewal. Next slide. This is the same with the Phoenix Talent School District. That is an impact to the state school fund and their per pupil. Amount of money would not be lowered due to this urban renewal area. Next slide. The community college is funded through a different statewide funding formula. Um, it is very similar to the state school fund and at the education service district, but not the exact same funding source. And you can see even, even though they get equalized, um, it's about a point three. Uh, so less than half of a percent. Next slide. This is the Jackson County Rural Fire Protection District number five. So um, they have a larger tax rate than some of the other taxing districts. So their impact is higher. It is about fifteen point, a little under fifteen point six million dollars. That average impact would be about four point four percent. I know some information was posted on the website yesterday that had a number lower than that. And I believe that mistake is our mistake as consultants. We had been working on that data. Um, and found out that uh, we had mistakenly used a different fire district. There are two fire districts. Um, a number three and a number five. So we apologize for that mistake. The, the difference is small, but it's still a difference. It is at. Um, an average of four point four percent of their total permanent rate revenues. Next slide. For the city of talent, they are the most impacted and uh, the city council is the decision makers on this and will have to weigh. Um, that balance for them. So their impact is uh, about fifteen point seven million. So it is very similar to the fire district's impact. Um, and that average impact for them, uh, for you is eighteen point six percent. So it's a higher percentage impact. The next couple of slides talk about that a little more. So next slide, John. So the net impact on the city funding, so you have about sixteen million dollars. Of foregone revenue from the city, but with that. Money foregone, you would potentially get sixty seven million dollars of tax revenue, increment revenue. To use within the urban renewal area, which is a net increase. For you to concentrate on that area of fifty one million dollars to be able to fund projects, programs and administration. And not all of that foregone revenue would exist without the investments made by the urban renewal area. And that TIF revenue does not increase property taxes. Um, Jordan, did you have a question?
You know, I just had a question on how to read that last chart, but it's gonna show up again, I can ask then.
Yes, I think, yeah, so. Go ahead, Jordan.
Oh, thank you. You know, I just have a question that I see the chart starts at twenty twenty four. So does that mean that the, the tax, you know? Difference wouldn't occur until that year?
That's correct. Fiscal year end, that's what the F Y E is, and I should have explained that. So it would be fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four. Excuse me. If this is adopted prior to January first and goes into effect prior to January first. Of this year, next year, um, your first tax increment revenue would be fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four. If it's adopted anytime after January first, you move down a year and it would be fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
I mean, thank you. I just have one more question on this chart before um, we can move on. So the, it totally makes sense. The, the three point six percent growth per year is what we've been seeing, you know, just region wide without urban renewal influence. Being at what the kind of growth rate expected is for within the urban renewal area. You know, is that taking the consideration of fact that we'll be, that we are currently rebuilding from the fires? We'll see that. What was afraid substantial requirements or sorry, substantial improvements?
Right.
Um, or is this more of an assumed steady increase?
We didn't put in, in, in many urban renewal areas where. Um, there is not as much vacant property. We will put in a flat assumption and it's usually somewhere between five and six percent. And we, and we base that upon the type of growth uh, that the city can inform us of and the type of permits. Within this area, we worked with Mr. Legarza to look at the potential future development. Both in the replacement of some of the commercial development, the rebuilding of that. Um, the building of new homes within the area. The replacement and building of some of the manufactured homes within the area. Um, we made some assumptions on that and compared that information to. Um, the, the average. Real market values of those properties within the county and the region so that we would have an idea of how much. Um, those would sell for and then the assessor adjusts those real market values down to the assessed value. And so we did that adjustment and then we even reduced that to say, well, okay, th- these are. Aggressive assumptions, so we're going to reduce that so that we aren't. Uh, making assumptions that are going to be so aggressive that they'll never be met. So we feel like the assumptions are um, realistic. Um, but they are, they, they are not a flat percentage rates. They're really just based on anticipated growth. They become more a flat percentage rate um, later in the life of the urban renewal area. After we hope that that a development occurs to uh, both replace what was lost and to provide new development.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna have to absorb that one in, but I appreciate the explanation.
Yes. Next slide. So as we were um.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Could I just piggyback on Jordan's last question and could we go back to that slide? Um, so here's a question. Um, based on what you said, that was the, that was how the um. The for your uh, column was calculated. Based on, on those assumptions and that data modeling. Is that right?
Uh, correct.
So if we wanted to, we could put another column in there of what we would expect the growth to be if there wasn't any urban renewal. And if we did that, it would be less.
Correct.
So i- in a way, um, there could be a column that could say, you know, and, and in a sense, what the other districts are giving up. Is, is not what we, the growth we would see with urban renewal. They're giving up. What, you know, they would have without urban renewal. It seems like we're um, we're doing a, a comparison. That's making the other districts look like they're losing more than they would be if there wasn't any urban renewal. And that might be a subtle distinction that's not worth it to pursue.
We, we get asked that often and, and especially. In, in this case. Uh, we, we had a meeting with Jordan, your city manager, and she asked me if. And we, we were telling her our expertise and she asked me if we had ever dealt with a city that had undergone a disaster like this. Because we, we have tons of experience. We, we have not. So, uh, because it hasn't happened, which is a, a good thing that it hasn't happened, but it does mean we're. Um, we're making some assumptions here that we believe are based on real fact. Um, but, but we don't know for sure and. And we also don't know for sure. That we can just limit it to uh, three, a, a three percent growth. So. So we've done that in the past, sometimes only when pushed, um, because we don't think it's really an accurate portrayal. We like to be accurate with what, what we're trying to tell them about with the hope that this will increase. The development within the area. Um, so that's, that's the way over time we felt is the most truthful approach. Um, although the other may be more pragmatic and say, look, if it's just three point six percent. Um. You, you know, for the first year, you can see it's twenty twenty four. For the city, that three point six percent for this area would be um. Thirty three, nine oh five, because we aren't projecting any growth there yet. So if you just took that and took it throughout the whole area, yes, it, it would be different. Um, and presumably we, we, we can run that. We. We just don't want anyone to think we're trying to hide anything about. What we hope, what we anticipate the growth will be.
Sure, and, and I, and I appreciate that transparency and, and painting the picture, but just from, and I just wanna make sure I got the math right. If, if there weren't any, if it was the same growth within the boundary as outside the boundary, would that percentage change? Would it's?
It, it changes a, a little bit, um, but not nearly as much as what we have here.
Okay.
And Elaine, if you don't, I just like to just clarify my question, cause this will be a follow up conversation. You know, I'm really looking more, um, just at the, at the short term. Um, kinda impacts here, you know, looking at that thirty three thousand, fifty four thousand, seventy seven thousand. You know, those are, you know, lower than I expected for sure. Um, but I'm also recognizing that we're having a huge boom in growth right now. We're freezing our property rates, you know, at that January twenty twenty one, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, which is, you know, prior to a lot of the, the rebuild that's already occurred happening. Um. So something I'd be interested in just talking with you all more is, is to help figure that out of. Um, the first, you know, one to three year number impacts. Yeah, I guess that's the part I'm struggling with that I think consequently that I'm not on the same bandwidth yet is, is the growth rate. In the first five years compared to the rest of the time, cause you said it's, it's a lot of vacant lots. Um.
Right.
Compared to, you know, other areas.
Right, that, the thing that happens on the development of property is it takes a while for that to actually hit the tax rule. Because when the assessor every October re- releases the tax rule for that year, it's based on the value of your property as of the prior January. So when they release the role in October of twenty one, a couple of months ago, it was based on the values of properties as of January of twenty one. And none of that construction had started then, really. And, and typically the construction needs to be complete before it goes on the assessors roles. So you can start construction, but unless the construction's complete, it probably won't go on the assessors role. So there's that lag, so there may be construction happening now. When they do the role in October of this year, if that wasn't complete in January, so that a month and a half ago, it won't go on the tax rule then either. So that's always confusing because it's such a lag.
That helps me, thank you.
So one other thing that I wanted to talk about here in terms of, uh, we had looked at the fire district who is foregoing about the same amount of money as the city is. But the percentage to the fire district was much lower than the city. Their percentage was about four point four percent and yours is eighteen percent. And that is because they serve a much wider area and their tax rate is um, just a little lower than your tax rate. So you're both three point, you know, one's one nine and the other's two something. Um, but their tax rate is spread throughout a larger service area than yours, and that is why, you know, some people might be confused about why their percentage impact is so much lower than the city's percentage impact, and that's the answer to that question. Next slide. So again, this just comes back to that money, we, we just showed all the different taxing districts who are contributing to this pie, knowing that a large part of that contribution comes from the education districts and they are backfilled, so they, that they are not, um, negatively impacted. Um, but, but that is what makes up this money that you potentially could be able to use within your urban renewal area. So I'm gonna stop there and see, uh, I, I don't think we're ready for community questions. Yeah, but I'll let you decide that, but since we just finished the financial portion, maybe we should see if anybody else has questions on the financial portion. I see none. So for the past, from February twenty third to yesterday, um, there was a survey up, um, on the website and you received a hundred and sixty survey responses, which frankly is fantastic. And I know in most town halls that I have around the state or community forums, we rarely will get one hundred and sixty participants. So uh, the survey is a nice way to allow people to participate without having to go to a meeting and be worried about COVID or you know, find a babysitter or whatever else, so, um, we, we think a survey is helpful in providing you information and we're going to walk through the information that was provided on the survey. So the very cor- first question was listing these categories of potential projects that we've been reviewing with um, the city council over the last few months. Uh, one, one thing that I noticed when Jordan made her presentation about your goals is the overlap of these project categories to the goals. And that is the great thing about urban renewal is it's an implementation tool. It allows you to have money to actually do the things that you want to do. And that is why it's used so much across the state is you have these goals, but unless you have money to implement them, the goals are great, but um, that they have much less value if you can't do anything about them. Um, so I put these in rank order of people's responses as the most important project. So, um, it's interesting because it's moved around a little bit by the way the questions asked. So when you ask just what is the most important category? Housing oriented solutions was the top category, vacant business corridor solutions was just right there with it, so the top two categories. Not surprisingly, emergency preparedness was also very important. Um, and then public infrastructure and then following behind urban forestry, multimodal transportation, parks improvements and arts at the far end. Next slide. We then asked of all of the different categories, are you very supportive of that kind of project supportive or not supportive? Um, and, and what we got was um, weighted averages of those to show you where the support um, lies in those categories. So in this one vacant business quarter solutions is on top of the housing solutions. And so is um, emergency preparedness. And so is urban forestry, and that happened because uh, people were able to also say very supportive and supportive, so when you put those two categories together, it um, allowed those to rise in importance to people. Um, and you can see that other than that, um, the multimodal transportation, public infrastructure, parks improvements and arts follow along at about, um, the same priority. Art had, um, really the only high not supportive category and it had a not supportive category at about thirty three percent. And the housing had a not supportive category of twenty two point five percent. So although the largest number of people said it was their number one category, you have, um, a lot of, you have about a quarter of people saying that they aren't supportive of that kind of project also, so. Um, clearly, if you're going to do that kind, a, a housing project, um, you need to understand what it is that the community's not liking about that or doesn't support so that we can form a housing program that fits what the community supports. Next slide. Um, then we had some open-ended questions and I didn't put down all of the answers and I'm not sure if you want me to read through these. I will defer to the mayor to let me know what you would like me to do. The first question was projects which should be considered?
Let me just go ahead and go through how, how you would normally go through.
Okay, so what I did on these is, um, tried, tried to group them so that if i- i- there were things like the number five that kinda all fit together, I put them together. Um, and it's interesting, all of you have a copy of the survey and I think you could certainly post that survey to your website. Um, but it's interesting to read it. Um, so the T I D building, which I tried to verify, but I, is that the, you know, the irrigation district building? Is that what that is? Yes, John says. So there are a lot of comments about that building and trying to do something to that site and that building and, and improve that area. Um, to make downtown more vibrant, to support police, fire and schools and don't use urban renewal at all, that it's not, um, not needed. There were a number of uh, comments within that category. That more transparency was desired from the city council. That kiosks or tiny parks for community in- information and community gathering spaces, pickleball courts, nature trails and walks. And that kind of goes back, um, Jordan, to what you talked about, um, in, in your survey, that the most important thing seemed to be around community. So I thought it was really interesting and great that, that those are matching. Um, so to share the history of the reg- region, to address parking and multimodal transportation issues, to get the town looking fresh and clean and beautiful, to address global warming, to have more kinds of food options and maybe local food systems, to encourage mixed-use development, to provide incentives for your existing businesses to be able to remain in talent. Um, if you're doing low-income housing, to try to do it in lower density complexes, so not huge higher, you know, four or five-story building complexes, but less dense. Um, to do a community center, to make sure your emergency routes were more clear and that there were fire safety improvements, you know, to improve your existing housing stock. So, um, that, those really encapsulate those responses and some of them I, I did group together. So there was a fourth question, which was additional activities that could be suggested under current project categories. Um, those again to me are really interesting and uh, great information from your community. So to build infrastructure, especially water infrastructure, and I think a lot of that was centered over the need for water during your, um, during your disaster. Concern over drought and fire issues, uh, to build a beautiful downtown that's fun and interesting, to continue your emergency services, to have a community center, recreation center. Um, do not use urban renewal to fund these projects, however, fund police, fire, schools and libraries. Um, to have multi-use plans for downtown and have historical signage, to encourage walk-by trails and sidewalks, so that multimodal transportation, more community events and public gathering spaces, business development accessible from the bike path at Clyde's Corner in Finny- Phoenix and I didn't really know about that one, so, you know, that, that's something you all probably understand better. Emergency ener- excuse me, energy efficiency, internet connections, more food service, surveys, emergency preparedness information available in Spanish. Prioritizing projects where goals intersect, um, for example, urban forestry and disaster preparedness, ensuring that we have fire resiliency in mind. Next slide. Um, to use volunteers throughout your community, to have housing cooperatives, to have a food co-op, have safe, pleasant, easy access routes and to concentrate on emergency preparedness. Um, I don't know if this is the same one, but pickleball courts, um, got in both areas. Uh, again, transparency, to build a downtown that's inviting to visit and enjoy, to attract needed businesses, um, to encourage better public transportation and to have a safe community with more police and police patrols. I see there is a new comment. Um, there's a comment that says the survey didn't allow for authentic public input. And then please show the impacts to the city, I think we've, we've already done that, we've shown the impacts to the city. So what have we been doing and, um, what are the next steps? So this, this started last in, in, um, the summer of twenty twenty one, where a feasibility study was done. And the feasibility study just was mostly to look at, is this a tool we want to consider? Is this a tool that could maybe bring some funding to allow us to address our problems within our area? Um, though that information was provided at a talent urban renewal agency meeting, um, both on August twenty twenty one and in October twenty twenty one. For those of you who are listening who don't know, the urban renewal agency is uh, made up of the mayor and city council members. Um, and they have regular public meetings that anyone can attend. Um, so if you aren't attending those and want to, it would be great if you did. Um, the city council then directed the preparation of uh, an urban renewal plan for review. So we've been working on different components of that, we started with city council and Tura meetings to talk about the boundary and where was an appropriate boundary where you could both have um, im- impact, but also, um, make sure that you're getting enough tax increment to allow the area to succeed. So those meetings occurred February second, February sixteenth, March sixteenth, all those were, um, advertised and publicly accessible, and then the Tura meetings were January twentieth, February first and March first, and then the survey has been on the website from February twenty third to March fifteenth, and again, there were a hundred and sixty responses. There is an open house, um, scheduled, I believe, for April twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, so we would urge anybody who's interested to a- attend that. Next slide. This schedule may uh, switch a little bit, but it just shows what we've done, so you can see at the red mark on the bottom, that's where we are today. So we've had the city council meetings just talking about boundary projects, um, allowing for public input. Um, uh, and tonight we'll do the same. And then if this shows the open house happening April twenty seventh and getting a draft, um, urban renewal plan to the agency April nineteenth. That might slip a little bit if we actually have the open house April twenty seventh, we didn't have that date set um, before, and so it will really depend, um, the city council will have to give me direction on what all we want to happen at the open house and whether a draft plan should be, a full draft plan should be available for review then, or whether just looking at components. Um, this shows going through the full public review process, which includes an agency meeting, a planning commission meeting, a county briefing, a city council, public hearing, which is notice to either your voters, your residents or your utility customers. Um, and then a second city council meeting to consider an ordinance and if that ordinance is passed, there are thirty days before it goes into effect. If, uh, the city stays on this schedule, the plan would be effective in August, which is before the assessor certifies a new tax rule um, in October of twenty twenty two. So that's a tentative timeframe from which we've been working. Um, there is time for some movement wi- within that, if we need to have movement within that. Next slide. And that is the end of the formal presentation, we tried to cover most of what we hoped people were interested in. Um, and I'm gonna give the floor back to the mayor to call on people.
Thank you, Elaine. Um, because we are planning an open house, uh, we're gonna go ahead and take our speaker request forms for tonight and I, I will, as I always do, look to the audience. Uh, for those who did not know, um, how to fill out a speaker request form before the meeting, we always check in, um, to, uh, we always try to check in uh, with the, um, attending audience to make sure that they have an opportunity to speak as well. Um, but because we have a town hall coming where that'll be a, an entire evening dedicated to questions and answers. Um, and, and because the full review isn't available at this time, I'm gonna reserve that time for questions and answers, so we'll take uh, public input tonight. If you have any questions, I would invite you to drop them into the Q and A and, um, we'll try to prepare the answers uh, for those questions for the, for the open house, but, um, uh, we're not, we won't be doing the Q and A tonight, we'll be doing that at the open house. So with that, uh, Hector, I'm gonna ask you, do you have any speaker request forms?
Uh, Mayor, for this item, I do not have any speaker request forms and I'm looking at the public testimony email right now and, and have not had anything else come in.
All right, let's take a look at the audience and see if anybody's raising their hand, I do see a hand up and it is from uh, Chris Luz. So Chris, if you wanna, um, we'll, uh, bring you forward and then you'll state your name and city for the record.
Okay, my name is Chris Luz, I'm in Phoenix. I'd love to see the council and Elaine, the mayor, address issues that were brought up by the fire chief, fire district five and the board for fire district five, and also the council here in Phoenix. The concern is that the newer renewal district would take a lot in the way of taxes and take that away from the county, the city, the fire department, I know Danny Jordan expressed concerns also. I really wanna see the council delve in. I really want to see the council delve into. The impact on your neighbors, Phoenix, the fire district, the county. And really consider that before you were to establish a fire district, number one. And also, Mayor, I'd like you to address in the meeting, or if not tonight, how. The fire chief feels that your residents would have to face an increase in taxes, not from a renewal. But taxes from a levy that the fire chief says would be needed in order to fund future fire district activities. And their workings. So those two things, increase in taxes of residents of talent, Phoenix and the Fire District Five. And also how it's going to impact negatively as has been has been, I guess, spelled out by Phoenix. Five to five in the county. I know you're not taking a Q and A tonight, but that's what I'd like to see addressed at some point. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. I see another hand up. From, it looks like Derek Vollkart. Derek, if you'll come forward and state your name and city for the record. And you're muted, Derek. There you go.
Thank you, Derek Vollkart. Former resident talent. Pardon me, I live in the county. And I'm struggling with the allergies in the county here. Bear with me, I sound. Even rougher than usual. So I just wanted to thank. Elaine and John for their work on this. It's something I've been tuned into for a long time and I'm. I do really hope that you guys highlight the numbers. I know you did a great job with that tonight, but as we move forward. And talent moves forward with this showing the benefit. That the. Other tax districts receive by all of the investment. That is getting pumped in via urban renewal. I think that gets kind of lost with some of the concerns about the immediate. Tightening of the belt, so to speak, for the the service districts. When it comes to the immediate taxes loss and because. Mr. Lux brought it up. I think it's worth noting from the, I know. Ms. Perslo brought it up at a prior meeting. And I just want to say that the fire, the Almeida fire, excuse me, as my voice is not hanging with me. Now, I mean, if I were when I asked the fire chief if the Blackberrys and the Mo Heights had been maintained. Would the fire have even reached talent? And his answer was, well, it's hard to say, but it's pretty obvious, probably not. And so I think we, that's not to say we won't have other fires in the city, but it's worth remembering that. This was worn for years. And so I, I think, and I wanted to say that I think the people that will show up to fight the next. Big fire will be the people that were there fighting the fire when we were there. The residents that were grabbing bulldozers and. That's not to say we're not dependent on our fire district, but. I just want to make that point too. And I really want to thank you all for your work on this. It's a. It would be crazy for a municipality to turn their back on urban renewal opportunity facing all this devastation that we've got. So thank you.
Okay, are there any other speakers? All right, seeing no more hands going up. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Sorry, you guys, I'm slow going through my. Through all my screens here because I have to. So if I miss you, please speak up. All right. Yeah, so I see that Chris Luz's hand is still up. He's already spoken once, so we're gonna. We're not going to take, while we have time, we'll take, we'll take your testimony one more time, Mr. Luz. I don't. Don't see any reason why not.
Madam Mayor, my hand was still up inadvertently. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
But thank you.
Yeah, if you wanted to add anything new, all right. And. There are, there's an additional question in the Q and A for the record. Will Mr. Legarza please address why Torah meetings are not noticed on public bulletin boards throughout talent? Not all residents can find out about meetings through the Torah website. John, I'm going to entertain this question just because there's been so much misinformation about illegal meetings and all this other nonsense. Did you legally notify the meetings? And if so, please tell us how.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, all of Tura's meetings are publicly noticed followed by the ORS standards.
And what are those for the record?
They're advertised online. Every, the meetings posted, everything's online for the ORS there.
And when you say they're publicized online specifically, what is that? Are you only, is that on our webs, on the website?
It's on talenturbanrenewal.com.
Okay.
Also, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to, if the council tonight can decide on a time for the town hall on April 27th. I think that would be great for staff to start to prepare for that too.
Sure, I'll make sure we get to that before we close this item. Council writer.
I know Jordan had her hand up too, so I didn't want to take away from Jordan. If you have something, go ahead.
I was a very basic logistics question of John is pointing folks to the Torah website to find this information the best. Way to go.
That's exactly right.
Perfect.
I was just curious to confirm the town hall on the 27th would be virtual on Zoom?
Yeah, it's up to the council, but I think that's what we would probably propose right now to make sure we get a. Good request of attendees.
Yeah, we've had much, much better attendance when we do them by Zoom, but I would, I certainly would leave it to the council there if they want to do like a hybrid model of some kind. Counselor Panomarif, did you want to make a comment?
No, Counselor Gritter. Made my comment.
Okay, and so if there's no, now, but when I say we're not entertaining public comments or public questions tonight, we're doing that on the town hall. Is there any questions from the council of Elaine or John? Counselor Panomarif?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just musing over some of the points that that were made. By Mr. Luz about, you know, whether we're responsible for deciding whether the fire district needs to go out and. And create a levy or something. I just wanted to add some, some of my thoughts over the past couple of weeks. And some of the research, I think. When those statements were made, we hadn't done the analysis yet. There wasn't this year by year, here's the estimate, here's the impact on the budget. So that gives some concrete information for the fire district to look at and maybe reevaluate. What the potential impact will be. I noticed also that there were some statements that kind of I found confusing. One of them was Dr. Perso's assertion in an op ed that. That the fire district had lost 90% of their tax base. Nine zero, I'm not sure where that came from. I also had a chance to review the fire district's biennial budget, which is roughly a $6 million budget. And I also noticed that they had very conservatively and probably wisely. Underestimated their revenues for this year by. More than 10%, around $670,000. And and that's, you know, I mean, that's normal budgetary. The way districts behave, which is is quite wise, but there were, I felt there were some, some jumping to conclusions. I hope that the fire district and all the districts will look at the data. And work with their staff to understand what admittedly is is very complex. In terms of understanding how this instrument works. I think it's interesting, I missed the Phoenix City Council meeting. I think it's interesting that that they would protest since they also have an urban renewal district. That the fire district does take into account when they do their budget. So that was, I'm sorry, I missed that meeting. But anyway, those were just some, some thoughts that I've that I've had over, over recent weeks and I'm so pleased to see some, some data modeling. To have a really rational conversation.
Great. And you know, we're going to have a lot of opportunity during the public hearings and during the many conversations. You know, we've, we've, we've scheduled quite a long dialogue. If you look at our first council meeting of February 2nd through, all the way through July 5th, when, when. Like an ordinance, should an ordinance be considered? So in between that date and. And in between those two dates, there's, there's a lot of scheduled conversation, a lot of deliberation that'll take place and a lot of addressing. I think that the only I do, I am, I think it's going to be important for us to address misinformation as it, as it arises. I expect that the council will have an opportunity to look at the facts. And look at the impacts and look at the, the, the very, very hard work that is in front of us to recover our community. Who uniquely lost 60% of their businesses along that 99 corridor. And into the downtown area and who desperately needs to build infrastructure so we can become more fire resilient. And do fire disaster preparedness and resiliency that the fire department can't do. But the city can, the Urban Renewal Agency can, and then, and then also. Also, to implement some of the housing plans that have been. In the urban renewal district plan since 2008. Housing being one of the main, main purposes for an urban renewal agency. But the piece of misinformation that I want to add to tonight's conversation. Was the editorial that came out actually in last Sunday, I think. About the only, the only appropriate use for. Or it seemed to imply the only appropriate use for an urban renewal agency, this powerful tool, this powerful tool, which I couldn't agree more, this is a powerful tool. Is for mitigating blight in areas that are rundown or have blight. And in fact, that is one possible use. The other possible use in the ordinance, and this is ORS. Four, five, seven point one, six, zero. And I don't think I could say it any better than the statute, so I'm just going to read the statute. Notwithstanding any other provision of ORS chapter four, this is, by the way, ORS four, five, seven point one, six, zero. I did send it to. To Gary Nelson. In response to his editorial and he didn't seem to know about this ORS. He didn't do the research on his editorial. So notwithstanding any provision of ORS chapter 455 or 456 of this chapter. Where the governing body of a municipality certifies that an area is in. Need of redevelopment and rehabilitation as a result of a fire, a flood. A hurricane and earthquake storm or other catastrophe respecting which the governor has certified. Has the need for disaster assistance under federal law, which. Both our city manager or both the mayor of this city and. The governor declared this an emergency. The governing body may declare a need for an urban renewal agency if necessary. And may approve an urban renewal plan and an urban renewal project. For such an area without regard to the provisions requiring that the urban renewal be blighted. And that the urban renewal area conform to the comp plan and economic development plan. Or if any, for the, for the municipality as a whole. So while I respect that everybody has an opinion and that some might opine. That the, the only appropriate use is to mitigate blight. There may be some who believe that the most appropriate use for an urban renewal agency is to recover from a disaster. And so I leave five, four, five, seven point one, six, zero on the record for the public's review. Anyway, that I intend to correct misinformation as we go along. Again. Who knows how this is going to go, but let's decide on facts and keep the conversations reasonable and. And that, that is always the fairest way to make a decision of this time. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments. We'll go ahead and move to the next agenda item. Elaine, I want to thank you for, for the hard work. And the great presentation. And again, for the, I just would also say for the record that this is our first time as well seeing these, contrary to popular belief. We have not been having a long behind the doors conversation about this. We haven't seen this analysis until tonight. At least in its completed state. So, John, if you have another comment?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And again, thank you, Elaine, but just if we could, the mayor circle back to just to. With the council of timeframe for the town hall.
Yeah, thank you. I was about to move on. So town hall on April 27th. Somebody want to throw a timeout? We have a date, throw a timeout and then I'll just look for consensus on that time. Counselor Panomarif, you were talking about it earlier. Six, you have an idea?
He said they're out of time. I'll say six.
Okay, 6 o'clock. Anybody object to six with a, by raising their hand? Counselors buyers?
I think we should stick with 6:45 to be consistent with meetings. For those who know it, it also leaves people time to get home from work if they work a little later than a nine to five job.
Great. 6:45 is a council time. This is going to be an urban renewal agency. So in keeping with that, I would say, what is the typical start time for the Torah meetings without a study session? Is it 6:45, John?
It's 6 o'clock, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, so 6 o'clock would be, would be a common tourist start. And I would say let's stay with a Torah timeframe. Well, no, actually, I have no, I mean, does anybody object to 6:45? I think your point about people getting home and having dinners is actually a strong one. Counselor Panomarif?
I just wonder maybe seven. I just think it's a weird time. The 45 is confusing. If we make it seven, people show up 6:45.
I expect it's going to be a two hour meeting at minimum. So you know, I would be more inclined to go a little bit earlier. Keeping people up till 9 o'clock is a meeting accessibility issue, a well-known one and.
Be 6:30.
Yeah, why don't we just split the whatever and say 6:30? All right, any objections to 6:30? All right, seeing none, we'll hold the town hall or the open house. It's an open house. So the Talent Urban Renewal Agency open house at April 27th at 6:30. And John will, will extend the. Will extend the outreach on that far, far and wide. So if we can get a flyer prepared, we'll get it out. As, as, as much as we can. If you go through the regular public announcements and then get a flyer in our hands, we'll make sure that it gets out. And maybe the city can assist as well. City's got a great outreach department that could help us out perhaps. Counselor Panomarif?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, we're calling it an open house rather than a town hall, but the, the purpose is. To present to the community and to also hear from the community, right?
Right, they have an open dialogue with the community.
Conversation. Perfect. Thanks.
In keeping with the history of the Urban Renewal Agency, I've attended many over the years and, and they really are very successful. Okay, is there any other comments on this item? All right, so we'll move on to 13, Commission Committee Reports. So everybody's kind of in a random order here. I'll just call you out based on how I see you.
Oh, actually. Mayor, may I interject really quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. I just want to call attention to the council that I did submit a new report this month into our agenda packet. You know, we've been figuring out ways that we can better elevate commission and committee voices when they make recommendations to bring them before councils. We hope to regularly use this report to summarize for you all the recommendations coming out. So that council can decide if there's certain ones you want to pull out for discussion. If there's certain ones that you'd like staff to bring before you as a new city policy or like, they'll be in that spot for discussion.
And that'll be in section 13. So why don't you go ahead and go, I mean, we have a little time. Why don't you go ahead and go through it and or highlight it. And then we'll take it upon ourselves in the future to go through it.
Perfect. So you know, every month I just want to report back to all of you of what kind of openings we have. So this report will always share when we have open seats. So that recruitment can keep happening. And then two recommendations that committees pass to be elevated to city council. Right now they're emailing staff with those recommendations, but whatever is best for you all as liaisons to your committee, we can receive that info in any way. These are all the recommendations that have come out of committee or commission meetings in the past month.
And when can we expect them on the agenda?
So that was actually a process question I had for you, Mayor. My thought was to bring them to all of you to name which ones you like to have on the agenda versus which ones you feel like we don't need to have council action on. Or should I just be putting them on the agenda as they occur? What is the typical process?
The typical process is that all recommendations, I mean, we had some pretty in-depth conversations over the last handful of years about this. That all recommendations come before the council as written by the commission. If they don't need a decision, I would hope that the liaisons would go back as part of a training effort. To say, you know, this was the disposition of the recommendation, but as it turns out, it didn't need a. And that's just to further develop the committees and the commissions. Otherwise liaisons can then just bring the outcome of the decision from the recommendation. It used to be, and I would invite the liaisons to consider this however they want. But it used to be that somebody from the board brought recommendations to the council. And I mean, for one thing, I think that hones the recommendations to those items that need to come before the council. But also the one thing that worked really well when that happened. A representative, it sometimes was the chair, sometimes it was the vice chair. Was that if the council had any like process questions, you know, what process did they have? Or what was kind of the deciding factors or, you know, background or anything? They had somebody there that could talk about the conversation that took place other than the minutes. But you know, capacity is an issue for everybody right now and we all are suffering from COVID and fire exhaustion. So with respect to that, I don't think any of us would want to insist on that, but it worked really, really well. I hope that answered your question, Jordan.
It did. And we'll clarify this process in writing too and shared our March 30th meeting with all of the chairs. But it sounds like to me what we'll do moving forward is I'll wait for liaisons to share info with us that we can include in this report. So it's all here in one collected spot for you all to discuss.
So my question would be then, so some of these are, let's see, like recommends the. Like I'm looking at number one, for example, and that might normally come under like new business. As a recommendation for a decision adopting the priorities with a little bit of a report from. From the committee and commission. That's what I've known before. But are you suggesting that we do all of these, all recommendations under 13, which I don't object to, but is that what you're hoping for?
No, no, I was hoping council to say, hey, we would like, you know, 1, 2, and 4 to be on a future agenda. And then we would, you know, prepare the report and get it on there. But we can really do it anyway. And so what I'm hearing here is let's, Mayor, you and I talk offline to develop the process. But I'll let you guys all give your reports tonight and we'll give it another go next month.
Yeah, my only concern about that, just really quickly, would be that the amount of time it would take to process a recommendation. If we were the ones that were deciding what agenda it was going to go on in the future. But because sometimes it's time sensitive, but yes, we can talk offline. All right. But the report we're going to get nevertheless, right? I mean, we're going to get that. Yeah, that's great. That's awesome. Thank you, Jordan. Great way to start. All right, so I'm just going to go through you as I see you on my screen and then if you have something great, if not, you can. Make your report at another meeting. Council buyers, do you have anything?
The recommendations that are included in this report happened before my time. I just sat in for my first meeting as the council liaison for Parks and Rec, which is great. Councillor Clark isn't here. He, in his Talent Urban Forestry Committee capacity, gave a really great presentation on a collaborative effort. Between both the Parks and Rec Commission and the Urban Forestry Committee. To create a natural delineation between Cameron Springs Park. And the previously named Totem Estate, Mobile Estates. Using native species that are drought tolerant and a beautiful mixture of trees, shrubs, all that good stuff. So I would say that would be the big thing to share at this point.
Thank you, Council buyers. Council Penom, if you have anything to report?
Yeah, what I remember from RVNPO, no news there. But there was a pretty adorable presentation at the RV Act from the Southern Oregon Wildlife Crossing Coalition. So that's a partnership that's advocating for improved wildlife movement and increased safety for motorists. From about Southern Ashland down to the California border. And what they're working on is the creation of a network of safe wildlife crossings. And I can send a link out to y'all later. It was a pretty nice presentation. Probably the work they're doing, the feasibility study right now. So probably nothing will happen for at least a year. But it's good to see that there's some attention being paid to that.
Thank you. Council Brighter, what have you got?
Together for Talent had a guest at their last meeting, Ray Sanchez is the president of Solarized Rogue. Their local nonprofit based in Talent. They're about to kick off, if it hasn't just happened. A large project at the OSF building on Town Avenue. So they're really excited about that. And I believe Ray, Jordan can tell me for sure. It's going to give a presentation to city council in April, April 20th meeting, second April meeting.
Great, thank you. Good news. Council Pesteza?
Hi, well, I was attending my first planning commission meeting. And unfortunately, they did not have a quorum, so not much happened at that meeting. It was short though, that was nice.
Better days to come, better days to come. Thank you, Council Pesteza. Councillor Perry Miller?
Yeah, so T-PAC actually does have a recommendation that I would love to talk about if we could. Jordan, is that, okay, um, hold on, let me go to my notes.
Jordan, can we get that report back up? Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
So T-PAC met earlier this month and folks from the Talent Historical Society came to talk to us with a proposal. So we got to speak with Deborah Moon and Lunette Fleming. And they are in the process at Talent Historical Society of creating. An Almeida Fire Stories book, which is basically going to be a collection of stories from folks. Who lost their homes or just were impacted by the fire. And so the ask to T-PAC was for some funds from the Public Art Fund. To help with the processing, formatting, designing, and layout for that book. They asked T-PAC for a large amount and the consensus was that the folks would. Decided they would rather do the first stage of this support. Rather than approving the entire ask. And part of that was based on the amount of money that we perceived was probably still in the Public Art Fund. And part of it was also based on the length of time that this project seemed to be able to take. So, yes, so the ask is for city council to approve $1,500 from the Public Art Fund. To the Talent Historical Society for layout, formatting, and design of their Almeida Fire Book.
What was the whole ask? What was the full amount?
The full amount was 2,500, but my understanding is that they. They did not know how much money T-PAC actually had. So they came into this meeting learning about T-PAC just as much as we were learning about their project. And the first part of their project will probably take the rest of this year. So there was an invitation for them to return to a future T-PAC meeting later on to talk about the second part, which would be the actual printing of their books. Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
And Aubrey would have loved to be here to answer all of your questions, just so you know. But yeah, she understands that we're working through a different process. So I will do my best.
So was, is, so the Historical Society, is Ron Medinger still with them? Part of this?
That's my understanding, but Deborah Moon and Lunette Fleming were the people who were able to attend our meeting.
I just, I think. You know, they've come to the city before with discretionary funding requests. And I'm surprised they didn't just come directly to the city. Did they give you any reason? I mean, I'm not criticizing, I'm just wondering if they give you any reason about that.
I'm not sure how they found us, but one of the things that. T-PAC has talked about is desire to create sort of like a public art fund application. So that we're able to kind of go through these requests and have folks almost do like a little mini grant application. Rather than the committee having to field questions on the fly with folks who come to us. But to answer your question, I'm not sure how they found T-PAC. Aubrey might know, but I don't.
Jordan, do we have any discretionary funds left in the council's discretionary money?
We do. I would say off the top of my head that there is close to $29,000 left in it.
It seems to me that this would make more sense and it's up to the council. But this makes more sense for the Historical Society to come before the council with a presentation of what they need the funding for. And ask for discretionary funds from the council. It seems awkward that we would provide discretionary funding for a committee or commission. So that they can provide discretionary funding for, just seems awkward. And again, I'm not criticizing, it just seems awkward. And to your point, I just would say too, to T-PAC's point about setting up art grants. What I would hope is that, what I would hope is that what we would see is a policy written and recommended to the council. For creating art grants and that when they come to the council for discretionary funding, if we get back to the practice. That we understand as we're providing discretionary funding for T-PAC. That we're providing some of that discretionary funding into their grant program. And it just seems, it just seems from a procedural standpoint, it just seems cleaner to me, but I could be wrong. Anyway, I'd be happy to talk more about that with you, Jordan, because I know we have a, we have a. We have the conversation about discretionary funding processes earmarked for one of our Monday calls. And we probably want to get to that before the budgeting. So this might be a good time to take that up. But in the meantime, yeah, I just feel like those two different issues. One would be whether or not the council wants to talk about using T-PAC funds or asking them to come and ask for some of our discretionary funding. And then B, if you do proceed, if T-PAC does proceed with providing art grants. That they would, what they would do is actually recommend a policy to the council and have that policy up for adoption. Those are just my thoughts. Council buyers and then Council Perry Miller?
Oh, I just wanted to say I really support the idea of a presentation about the content of the book. Since this is an actual writing of history, I'd love to know what we would be supporting with this approval of funds.
Council Perry Miller?
Thank you. I also just wanted to say they did provide a proposal and Aubrey wrote a recommendation. I think I may just not be explaining it very well. But there was also an understanding that this process might take a little bit longer. So if we are not able to do this today, that is also fine.
Yeah, again, my personal feedback is that I'd rather see them come before the council and ask for the full amount and do a presentation. And we've funded historical books before. With the Talent Historical Society, we provided discretionary funding in the past. And some of the books have just been really, really great. But yeah, those are just my thoughts. So you're looking for a decision tonight as to whether or not we would approve the awarding of the 1,500 from the T-PAC funds?
That was the T-PAC recommendation.
So I would entertain a motion. Council Penom?
Actually, I have a question. Sorry, it's late for me. So Council Perry Miller, did you say that they weren't in any hurry for these funds?
So the book itself will probably not be ready for printing until the end of 2022, early 2023. So based on that timeline and also based on just us knowing that we probably weren't getting this process totally right. They, I don't think would be surprised if we needed to change. The expectation or process. So I don't think anyone is going to be devastated if nothing happens tonight. Yeah, because I really, you know, to Council buyer's point and everything, I think it'd be great if they came before and did a little presentation for us. If it's not going to wreck their timeline, I'd prefer that. Just get it on a future agenda if that works for everybody.
I have one more question if I could. Council Perry Miller, did they talk anything about, did they talk at all about any content? I mean, my understanding is that from, just from this report, that it would be stories of the fire. Did they expound on that at all? Jordan, did you want to take that question?
All that, Council Perry Miller, fill that in. I just wanted to let you all know that this is, you know, my mistake. Aubrey had written a staff report for this topic item. But I did not have the right process in my mind. I'm happy to share that report with all of you as well that does provide more detail. But Council Perry Miller, I'll let you take the mayor's questions from there.
Got it. So it's 65 stories at this point. Some are in Spanish, some are in English. They did this in partnership with both of the schools. So they went to the elementary school, they went to the middle school. But my understanding is that they've also talked to firefighters, families that were affected, so not just young folks. Although I did think it was pretty fabulous that they were doing that outreach to the schools. And we did also have a conversation about English and Spanish. And they said that that was something that they would definitely be trying to make sure it was accessible to both folks. Who spoke English and Spanish. And they are still accepting stories, but at this point it's 65.
Well, we can do a couple of different things. One is I could entertain a motion to accept the recommendation. we can do a couple of different things. One is I could entertain a motion to accept the recommendation. The other would be to ask to put this on a future agenda with the staff report from Aubrey and, and have the recommendation presented that way. If you know, or the other opportunity is to, is to, you know, not table. What is the right expression? Counselor Panamera, my guru of Robert's rules.
Postpone.
Yeah, we could postpone it and invite the historical society to come before us on some of the council discretionary funds. So I'll leave it to the council.
I just want to say that would be my preference. I think, I, I think we all want to see their little presentation. We're curious, so if, if that's doable.
Any objections to inviting them before the council for the full ask of the discretionary funds? Any objection to that? Counselor Perry Miller? Are you objecting?
Not objecting. I was just going to say, I think they would be delighted to come. I can't speak for them, but they had a great time talking to us. So I'm sure that they would love coming to council.
I also have to say, T-PAC is doing such an amazing job, like they're, they're just, they're just killing it. And so if we could spread the wealth a little bit, that would be cool too. Counselor Greider?
Not an objection, but I thought a good time, as you mentioned, Mayor. I just wanted to share appreciation to T-PAC for their monthly art projects. I, the tie dye in March was so cool. I just thought that I was so impressed. And so I just wanted to see if you can share that with them. Yeah, I'm just really grateful for their community thoughtfulness on.
Great. Well, with five minutes left, please, um, Perry Miller, we don't have any objections to going back to T-PAC and inviting the historical society. And it would be really fun to have a representative of T-PAC there as well, because they've ushered in this great work. And we don't want to, we don't want to diminish that in any way, but invite him to come before the council and, and present. All right, thank you. Anything else? Oh, oh, so really quickly, my committee report is I am taking up the economic development piece for the committee and commissions. I haven't gotten circled around to the, the city committee yet. My first priority has been to stand up the talent business alliance, which was formerly the chamber, which went inactive during the during COVID. And it was like Jordan said, I said, I need to get in the office and get started. She said, it's a time capsule in there. And it was, it was like going to Bodie, California. It was a ghost town in there. Literally the computer was still plugged in and, and on and checks were lying on the table to be deposited. It was really something. Anyway, I managed to get it reactivated. And so I'm working with a lot of regional partners, just in discussion. You know, what, what, what can we do? And how can we help businesses recover too? What's the next phase? What's, what, what does the future hold for them? I look forward to talking more about it. I'm really having a lot of conversations right now. And, and the data that came in from the SOU survey is going to really inform strategy. And I'm really looking forward to, to working some of that stuff out before I form up a really good report. But suffice to say that we've got, we're up and running and we've got a little board. And I want to thank Eleanor Panamera for helping me get that all going. It's, it's a little bit like herding cats sometimes. All right, with that, no other reports, anything for other business in the last, see, I better look at my, my phone clock. Oh, it's twenty-one after. We have nine minutes. Any, anything for other business or future agenda? Anybody? Let me scroll across here. And so I'll just adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-one. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Great night.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good one.